Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Chambers.
President.
Ron Brooks.
President.
Todd Corain. Duara Cash Nalan. Do we have a court? We don't have a court.
We do, Ron's on the phone.
Town officials and employees participating when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressy.
She's in the lines.
Okay. This is going to be a hybrid meeting. Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of the Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. Now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended to June 16th, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477, or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/133-747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording this meeting? If they're being non-accommoded accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. I've already said that. Ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, Town Administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And lastly, if you'd all join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible).
So, to recall some of the Board members, Todd Corain, are you online now?
President.
Duara Cash Nalan, are you online now?
Yes, I'm here.
In case we have a home board. Okay, tonight, 7:00 PM, applicant Sean Griffin of Griffin Homes LLC requesting a site plan review under Section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for the two-family residents at 17 Willa Street, MAP 6 Parcel 210. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it, sure.
All those in favor. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
Ron Brooks.
Aye.
Todd Corain.
Aye.
Duara Cash Nalan.
Aye.
And myself as an aye, it is a vote. This applicant has requested a continuance. May I have a motion to continue to our next hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Good, Todd, I'll second it.
All those in favor. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
Ron Brooks.
Aye.
Todd Corain.
Aye.
Duara Cash Nalan.
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. This will be continued in the next meeting. Next up on the agenda is applicant JM Cool Incorporated. Jim Fabry requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.7.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a distribution facility at 190 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., MAP 34 Parcel 4. This has been continued from our July 13th meeting. Is there anyone here representing JM Cool?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Travis Brown, Traffic Engineering. Also here tonight is Etam Monticube, Traffic Engineer, GPI, and clearly, Charles Upjohn, New York. Since the last meeting, I won't get into specifics of the project unless the Board wishes to, but kind of where we left off in an update is that we have received comments from Graves Engineering. We prepared responses. We haven't formally submitted those yet. All minor comments in nature. So, what we're looking to do tonight is solicit any final input, get all information on a plan, revise the plan, get the comments back. Since the last meeting, we have also received comments from VHB regarding traffic. Heather's prepared to speak to any of those comments, any information that the Board wishes to discuss. If you remember, we requested three waivers on this site, the first being the parking stall length. We had initially had an 18-foot length requesting a waiver. We've since updated that to 18 and a half, so we're no longer requesting that waiver. We've also provided a screened-in dumpster enclosure, even though that dumpster is up against the building. We'll be screening it with chain-linked fencing, so that will be enclosed. That waiver goes away. So, the single waiver we're asking for at this point is the three access points along Commerce With that said, at the last meeting, the majority of the topic was noise at Meadowbrook specifically. We have reached out to our landscape architect. We've revised that plan to include a six-foot solid fence. I sent it to Adam earlier. We didn't formally submit it by the Thursday deadline. However, it may be beneficial to look at that just to get kind of some input from the Board. But it is a six-foot tall solid fence along the Meadowbrook property with about 50 plantings. There's a mixture of, they're all evergreen, about eight feet tall, so there's going to be a row of eastern red cedars. Where space allows, we'll be staggering those to give, you know, more of a noise buffer. But that's, that was the topic. That's how we plan to address some of the noise issues. I was on site fairly recently while they are doing some work, and, you know, Mask Pike, as we all know, is on the other side of Meadowbrook that provides an unbelievable amount of noise and actually was drowning out the noise on site. So, you know, we think being 60 feet downgrade of that Meadowbrook cul-de-sac in that closest unit, which is 350 feet beyond the property line.
You mean Tuck Farm Road? Or do you mean Meadowbrook?
Tuck Farm Road, Meadowbrook, yeah, condominiums off Tuck Farm Road, yep. So, we believe that that noise and those particular plantings will provide the noise buffer I think that the neighbors would be looking for. So, you will see that on a revised plan that will be submitted back to the Board. With respect to civil, happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions related to traffic, Heather could speak to those as well.
Just one quick question. Are you going to put a, you're doing a fence up in the back at the top of the slope where it faces toward Tuck Farm Road, that cul-de-sac and the other. Are you doing another one to block it from Meadowbrook as well?
What's the trailer park?
Tuck Farm is Meadowbrook condominium.
Meadowbrook is the trailer, trailer park on the other side.
Windbrook is the trailer park.
Windbrook.
Sorry, Windbrook.
That's what I mean.
(Inaudible).
I always knew it was Tuck Farm Road condominiums.
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion. No, we're not doing any screening there as we discussed. That was, I forget the number, 1,900 feet away through the woods. Highly unlikely you're going to see that from that vantage point. That was a Google Earth that we were looking at or the Town GIS to show that wooded area in between. So, the screening noise barrier is only for Meadowbrook.
I know it's like almost 2,000 feet, but isn't there a big bare area there where the power lines run through? That isn't all trees. That's wide open.
Yeah, there's an easement there about 250 feet wide. So, okay, say we're down to 1,600 feet.
Do you have any comments or questions, Steve?
Did you guys see the pair review on the last waiver that you're requesting on the parking lot and driveways, drive entrances?
From VHB, is that what you're speaking of?
So, you guys saw them? Have you formally addressed them yet?
I believe you're referring to the comment, the width of the entrances, the dimension on the width. Is that what you're?
Not just the dimension on the width, but also the justification for the reasoning? Like, they were looking for additional reasoning and reaching out to the fire department and make sure that the vehicles had the access they needed and?
So, there was a tech review meeting prior to submission that that was discussed. The reason being, this entrance provides truck access to segregate the cars for parking. So, practical, you know, speaking that it's separate, trucks don't interfere with cars as they're trying to exit and enter the facility. We have provided a truck turning plan that provides access around, which is another benefit to having multiple access points where that truck can come around the facility. We have updated our turning movement plan to show that turning movement for the fire chief to review.
So, the waiver is just one additional entrance?
Correct. Well, the entrances are based upon frontage. This technically has enough frontage to have three access points to it, but they're closer together than the bylaw allows, which is why we're asking for a waiver.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any questions?
No, good.
Todd, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The only question that's outstanding for me is from the VHB report, is that they asked for a sightline review of the driveway. Have you done that?
Good evening. For the record, Heather Monocle with GPI, the Traffic Engineers. We did receive the VHB letter, and we are addressing that. We're working together with Turning Point using their proposed and existing profiles, and we're in the process of preparing the sightline plan now. So, we were hoping to get any other comments that needed to be addressed so that we can formally respond to those comments. So, we will be providing sightline plan and profile for all three driveways for the facility.
Did you hear that, Todd and Ron and Duara Cash?
Yeah, I did. And that answers my question.
Thank you.
Duara Cash, do you have any questions?
(Inaudible).
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that may have a question or a comment? Doreen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doreen Goodrich, Windbrook Acres. First, you know, absolutely I want to acknowledge that the developers want to move forward with this project. They have a tenant. They have, obviously, they want to move forward with this project. But this project, keep in mind that will have significant impacts for a long time on not just the residents in that area, but the entire town. So, I ask you to be cautious and deliberate in your, in your decision-making. A couple of issues I want to address, and one of them is, I want to go back to the comment that was just made, because I have spoken with residents in the Meadowbrook condominiums at Tuck Farm, and I know that the representative at the last meeting asked that an actual sound barrier be considered, and it was said on the record that they would consider a sound barrier, and they're now talking about a six-foot fence. So, when we have the opportunity, I'd like to know what considerations were given to a sound barrier. The second thing, of course, is the ongoing concerns with traffic. The traffic at Route 20, the need for wider lanes, a possible traffic light. So, Mr. Chairman, my question to you is, have we heard back from Mass DOT? I imagine that you haven't, because it's my understanding that the, the opportunity for public comment, so I know a lot of residents submitted public comment, that period just closed at 5:00 PM yesterday. So, I don't imagine you have anything back from Mass DOT, but for the record, I'll ask you.
No, we haven't heard anything.
Okay.
I'll have Adam get ahold of the DPW.
Yeah. So, you know, I put my comments on the record at our last meeting. I have concerns with many trucks being in queue trying to pull it onto Route 20. We know that, you know, FedEx left because they had great difficulty pulling onto Route 20. I'll let others address the traffic concerns. Again, you know, I'm very interested in what Mass DOT has to say. This is a significant project, a huge impact on this area of town. And, you know, I think I don't want to be putting the cart before the horse. If we need to do road improvements for that section of Route 20, we should be working all at the same time, because, again, for the record, because I know I pointed it out last time, this is one little tenant in a very large development. We still have huge parcels of this development that will be developed and unknown the number of cars, trucks, et cetera, that will be in and out of not only 190, but the 50 site, which will impact the entire area. So, again, my biggest concern is traffic. And my last thing, just for the record, I know procedurally where we are at with the timeline, with opening the public hearing, and I've seen, unfortunately, not since you guys have been on the Board, but in the past, that we've had to give approval because the time lapsed and we didn't get written permission from the applicant to continue. So, I just want to be aware that we're, we're following through with that and get written, written approval from the applicant if any continuances have to happen beyond the allowed dates that the Board is required to make this decision. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to make comments.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak?
Thank you very much. My name is Gary Prey, and I'm not only a resident of Windbrook Acres, but I'm also a Town Meeting Member for Precinct 3, which is that area, as well as up the hill toward Packerchog. So, there's quite a few people that would have concerns about this. But I've never spoken like this at a meeting, so if you don't mind, can I just read what I've already written?
Absolutely.
Oh, perfect. So, what I want to say is, I've been a resident of Windbrook Acres since the late '70s. I speak not only for myself, but also on behalf of the residents of the park, and also many other residents in this heavily populated area, which is a lot of mobile home parks, and it's highly, it's densely populated, if you've been through any of that, as well as, well, as a Town Meeting Member, those people up in Tuck Farm Road, which I've already been talking about, and up on Packerchog Street. But what I would say is the proposed site location for the 80 Bay Trucking Distribution Center will exacerbate already overburdened travel conditions, as well as further endangering citizens. In recent years, Route 20 has become a literal afternoon parking lot extending from the Mask Pike exit in Milbury straight on to Route 395 and the 290 ramps onward into Oxford. Clearly, if anybody's been down there, late afternoon can be a nightmare, especially as you get toward the weekend. I don't even bother trying to get out anymore when I see some of that traffic. The road clearly cannot handle the current traffic load, much less the burden of a formidably large trucking distribution center. Moreover, the area, the same area is home to several mobile home parks, which I've mentioned, hosting several, I mean, several hundreds of residents concerned with their right to quiet enjoyment. Aside from the side barrier fencing along Route 20, something a few years back the state put in, and we truly appreciate that. That made a big difference. But aside from that, it's the frequent rumble of engine jake brakes and the high rates of speed. It's a testament to the few mitigation efforts imposed by the state. Very little has been done. Adding to the speed and noise pollution is the increased danger to citizens that regularly walk to and from the supermarket, the various retail stores, the restaurants, and the Greenwood bus stop. You know, people walk constantly up and down there. Not everybody has cars. I've seen people constantly going back and forth, store and whatnot, always walking along that section of Route 20. In 40 years that I've been a resident, I've witnessed a large increase in traffic accidents leading to more and more fatalities. Lastly, as a Town Meeting Member in Auburn's Precinct 3, my comments are echoed by residents in my district. Please consider carefully the impact proposed by this project, the impact it'll have on our community, and the mitigation efforts that will serve to help protect Precinct 3. I ask you, are there any enforceable efforts underway to address the traffic noise and pedestrian safety issues that I previously discussed? And thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to address in your comments was the jake brake. We have no, we have no regulation over Route 20. That's Mass DOT and the state. In our last meeting, I requested that no jake brakes be allowed going down the hill to the facility, and that could be enforced as far as keeping that noise down.
(Inaudible).
And as far as noise level goes, as far as inside this industrial park, I think it would be prudent for the developer to take sound readings at different times of the day for background noise to see what it is, because 65 decibels is what we speak at. 90 decibels is almost deafening. It's not linear. It's unbelievable. So, I think that would be, and a six-foot fence, yeah, that'll divert some of the noise. If it's straight across, it would be better if it was an eight-foot fence and it was offset, because that takes the sound waves and breaks them up and sends them back to the building. And it just bounces back and forth in there instead of going up the hill, or, I think you have enough room between there and the trailer park to mitigate that noise. But I think it would be prudent for you guys to do some research and get background noises. You got the Mask Pike there. You got Route 20 there. You know, do it at, my suggestion would be do it at peak times, like in the morning for commute, evening for commute, and then these guys are going to be coming in around 11 o'clock at night sometimes to finish getting in there, to end up on a Friday night for a weekend or a Saturday morning, if you're going to take background noise at that time as well. Is there anyone else that would like to make up? Please, sir?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board this evening. My name is Joe Shanet, 129 South Street, and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. And I'm very concerned about this, this project as it impacts the over 1,000 residents from Greenwood Street to South Street. Okay, Route 20 at this particular time is almost impassable in the evenings. If you're trying to go west, you're in a parking lot. If you're trying to go east, you better not be on the west side, meaning that if you live on Jade Hill, you're not going to go west. If you live in Windbrook Acres, you're not going to go east, because you can't get across that solid line of traffic. If you're approaching from Greenwood Street, stop at Wendy's, get a meal, because you're in for a long wait during peak traffic times. Okay, and now we're talking about a distribution center who's going to put some number of trucks predominantly during the prime traffic time periods. Okay, I don't, I don't see how that's going to work. Now, I'm not saying this project shouldn't go forward, but it should be in concert with the improvements needed to Washington Street so we can not make a bad situation even worse. Relative to the sound barriers, okay, from what I see in this, this area, the people that live up on Packerchog Hill are looking down on this development. So, a six-foot fence for sound mitigation isn't going to do an awful lot, okay, because they're, they're actually, they're actually higher. Okay, so?
Like 60 feet below grade from Tuck Farm Road. It will have an effect on Tuck Farm Road. The Mask Pike is pretty loud coming through there. I'm not defending the?
I know, okay, but I'm also talking about Packerchog Hill, which looks right down on that, right down on that development. So, it's not just Tuck Farm Road, which came forward and issued their, their concerns. I'm sure the people at Packerchog aren't even aware of this project. I'm sure the people at Jade Hill aren't even aware of this. And Windbrook Acres, I think that was only because they're an adjacent butter to it. So, I'm just asking that the traffic situation on Route 20 be addressed in concert so that not only can facilitate this increased traffic flow that's going to happen, because not only the distribution trucks, but the center's going to be supplied from other vehicles. So, we're talking about a significant volume of traffic that's going to come to that area, and that should be addressed. And I know Route 20 is not your, not your, your issue, okay, but it's got to be addressed, okay, and then, of course, who's going to pay for it? Thank you.
The developer is going to put an exit lane in and an entrance lane in on the north side of Route 20 for the trucks to go in to exit. Officer, they're not sitting in line waiting to get off. They're going to get up to a certain point. They're going to be able to get off the highway. When they come out, they need a lane to be able to get up to speed with the highway as far as Route 20.
Not going to happen. Have you been on that section of Route 20 at the prime time from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock in the evening?
I travel the Mask Pike in that area every day.
Okay, so now, when I travel the Mask Pike, I can't get off in Milbury, okay, at the shortest?
Not in Auburn either.
Okay, but Route 20 going west is a parking lot.
I understand that.
So, now I'm going to have trucks coming out of that development.
People are trying to avoid the Mask Pike. And if you've never noticed, on the weekends, it's backed up from Sturbridge.
I'm not talking about the Mask Pike. I'm talking about Washington Street.
Correct.
Washington Street right now from 5:00 to 7:00 is a parking lot.
Excuse me. Let me finish what I was going to say. I understand.
I think I was parking first.
But what happens is people get off the Mask Pike to take Route 20 west to avoid the Mask Pike, which creates the clock. Now, that's a Mass DOT issue. It's not the Planning Board's issue. It's not a Town of Auburn's issue. That's something that has to be done by DOT. That road is well beyond years of needing improvement. It does need to be improved. But when you look at the whole overall scheme, if you have to put a four-lane highway in, and where does that end? Sturbridge? I mean, if you travel even from Charlton out to Sturbridge, it's, it's heavy traffic. I know it's a parking lot there from Greenwood Street all the way past the Shell Station, sometimes all the way to the entrance to 290 and 395.
That's right. So, I'm just asking, okay, that that, something be done, or at least a situation addressed, okay, in concert with this project, so we don't make a bad situation worse.
I understand that, but we can't tell the state they have to improve the road. They're making an improvement for an exit lane and an acceleration lane.
So, they'll have two more parking lot lanes, because just to have an acceleration lane to get into the parking lot. Is that what I'm hearing? Because they're not going to be?
No, they have a deceleration lane to get in the parking, an acceleration lane to get back on the highway, Route 20.
Now, hopefully, we can appeal to somebody's senses, okay, to address this in concert with this project. Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, just, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, an acceleration lane, where will that be going? East to west?
I believe that's going west.
Going west? So, it's almost like they're going to take a right turn all the time?
They won't take a right turn all the time, but they're going to be taking a right turn quite a bit of the time. I mean, probably 50/50. I don't know. I couldn't tell you that. But as far as the problems on Route 20, the existing problems, that is not something this Planning Board has any rule over. We have no authority over Route 20. That's Mass DOT. That's Mass DOT. And if you want to get that improved, I would suggest you go to the selectmen and have them approach the state to get improvements done on Route 20. Talk to your state representative. Talk to your state senator. Make us think. I mean, we, we're, our hands are tied with the bylaws of this town. This is in an industrial area. This kind of development is allowed in that area. So they still have to get permission from the town to tie into the easement coming from Packerchog for the sewer. So if they don't get that, I don't know what, they're going to have to do another plan. I don't know what it'll be. It's not up to me to make that decision. But I think you did wrong about Packerchog Hill. You're not going to hear that from Packerchog Hill. Because you can't even see it from Tuck Farm Road, with no leaves on the trees. I've been up there. The noise will travel. That's why I suggested a higher fence. I think the Mass Pike will probably make more noise in this development in the long run, with the trucks coming downhill, Route 20, the trucks accelerating on the Mass Pike. That needs to be improved. So I mean, sound barriers on the Mass Pike? Again, Mass DOT. That's not something the Town of Auburn can do or afford. Now, if they're going to put a sound barrier up on the, on the north side of that development to try to mitigate the, the sound going to Tuck Farm Road, I mean, I appreciate their effort, but I think it needs to be a little taller. But the trees are going to help if they do the eight-foot cedars and they offset them. That breaks up the noise. But like I said, I think you guys need to do your research on background noise and what is existing for noise, and what you may bring.
On, on.
Go ahead, Steve.
So that slope also requires actual fence, not just the sound barrier? I don't know if you guys were going to try to address them as one and the same, or you were going to have a fence because of the slope there, and then look at a sound barrier or additional height, whether it's the six or eight. I mean, the higher, the better in my opinion, but...
Yeah, so that fence would act as a sound barrier and a safety fence at the top of the slope. And then we change from a solid vinyl fence, which, based on research, isn't effective sound barrier, especially given some trees that are actually taller than the fence to start when planted. But the fence at the top of the slope in this area would just be a chain link fence. It's not meant for screening, it's simply meant for safety at the top of that slope. If that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Any other public comments or questions? Go ahead, Dorian.
Thank you again. I just want to follow up on what you just said about the turning lanes. And, and I appreciate the fact that you're working with Mass DOT, but I think I'm even more confused now, because we're saying we're, we're doing a, two, two lanes on that section of highway through the chairman. Do we already have Mass DOT approval? And have you, have you, I assume they need Mass DOT approval to, to add lanes and stuff? And my frustration would be, if they already have Mass DOT approval, then what was the point of allowing the public comment? Which isn't your issue, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, you know, you just mentioned the turning lanes, so that's why I'm asking that now. If the developer does have Mass DOT approval for that...
I know that was their intent, to put a deceleration lane and accelerate, and an acceleration lane back on 20.
Right.
Whether or not they've heard from DOT, we don't have any record of them.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe the, maybe the developer can answer that as to where they're at with Mass DOT, because, you know, we, we talk about the turning lane, and, you know, I've said before, my concern is there's not even a breakdown lane there. If someone breaks down, you're in the travel lane. So if, you know, if, if they do have Mass DOT approval for these turning lanes, you know, tomorrow I'll be reaching out to Mass DOT to see the plans, and I'd be curious to see what they were, and would also express my frustration with the fact that the public portion, comment portion of the project meant nothing if they've already got approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a traffic study? It's got a plan that shows our improvements on there. I think we've got a TV, you know, to help the council.
Well, you haven't got approval for Mass DOT yet for that?
It's currently under review.
Yeah. In case anybody knows anything about Mass DOT, that could take a year.
You know.
You don't know.
You, you said it, huh?
Yeah. It's facts are facts.
Sure. So in your traffic study, do you know, will they be heading towards Milbury or towards the 290? Was there a ratio that was considered?
In our traffic study, which was reviewed by VHB twice, actually, once for the subdivision and now once for the, the distribution facility in front of you tonight, we used a 50/50 split for the truck traffic, because it's kind of equidistant to the, to the 90, depending on which way they were going. And the employee traffic, we used zip code data from the employees that will be working there, and 65% are expected to and from the east and the remaining to and from the west, so 35%, right? So more traffic, you know, employee traffic, regular vehicular traffic is expected to and from the east to get to the site. And just for clarification, I know you're trying to bring the plan up, oh, it's in our traffic study, not necessarily the plan set, but we're proposing, just like every other, I guess I'll say, larger development, West Tech Drive, the Honda facility, all that, they have left turn lanes into their site, so they have westbound left turn lanes. We're proposing eastbound left turn lanes into our site, as well as the westbound right, right turn deceleration lane and acceleration in. So any, any development that we're talking about right now, it, you know, meets the warrants for those left turn lanes. VHB agrees with the proposed improvements, and, and just like the concerned citizens, they too said, make sure we get Mass DOT approval, which is what we're trying to do right now. It's been submitted, waiting for their comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question for the developer. Do you know when the greatest amount of trucks will be leaving that site, and when the greatest amount of trucks will be coming back to the site? Per day?
If you check our submission for the subdivision, have...
Sorry? If you check our submission for the subdivision, we have one that definitely has our traffic limit. And if towards the bottom of that, it's 880.
Bless you.
I believe it was 50 at peak. 50 vehicles at peak times, 300 around, around, or all day.
It was like 360 all day. I'm sorry to make you keep coming up.
No, no worries, that's my job. I know at the last meeting, there was a question about, right, how many daily trucks, right? So we had talked about that. It was, right, 50 daily trucks on any given weekday, nothing on the Saturday, because they, they come in so early. So anyway, the weekday daily additional, is that right? Yeah. So we have 25 trucks entering on a daily basis and 25 trucks entering on a day, entering and then exiting on a daily basis for 50 trucks during the day. Is that, oh, that could be additional during the rest of the day. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that, that isn't the right information. I'm sorry. I want to just make sure I have this correct.
I think we're over 300.
Yeah. You're right. 386 was the total trips into and out of the facility, but we broke it down into trucks, and that's just what I want to make sure I, I have in here. So we've got...
Your 50 is peak.
Excuse me?
If I remember right from reading the, the report, I think your 50 vehicles is during peak hours. You're only adding 50 vehicles during peak hours.
Yeah, I have...
Rest is around the clock, basically.
Right. There's minimal, like, oh, anyway, to answer the question that I got up here to answer was that, most of the truck traffic happens during the peak hours. It, it just does. So for instance, in the morning, right, the day shift people come in and 45 trucks leave in the morning, right? And then, and then 12 trucks return in the afternoon for the, for the night shift, and, and then those, those vehicles leave, you know, they leave in their personal cars. In the PM, just like I said, so the 45 trucks leave in the morning, and then they come back during the PM peak hour. So they're out during the day. Some of the night shift drivers do leave, but then they come back on, like, on a Friday, they leave, but then they come back on a Saturday morning, you know? So it's very, very before what we would consider the peak hour of traffic out there, or peak period of traffic, which is 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So we don't consider them having any peak hour traffic on a Saturday. It's all contained. They, they get back on Saturday, and they do not open up business again until Monday. So that's how it works. So to answer the question, it, it's the peak hour trips. They're leaving in the morning, going to do their distribution, and they're coming back in the afternoon. And that, it's exactly why we want the, the turn lanes out there, to get the trucks out of the through traffic and, and let them wait for adequate gaps in traffic to get into the site. And leaving the site, you know, there's going to be delays, just like any other driveway along the corridor, but we have a long enough road to accommodate that queuing, and they'll get out when there's an adequate gap in traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public or from the developer and the engineer? Are there any other questions from anybody on the board? Being none, I think you're requesting a continuance to the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, at that time, we have revised plans and revised comment responses to civil and traffic.
I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting, which will be when?
September 14th.
September 14th.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Who needs a second, Ron?
I'll make a second.
All those in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Duarkesh Nalan?
Aye.
And myself, John Regan, an aye, it is a vote. We'll see you in a few weeks. September 14th. Under other business, we have the Covenant Commerce Park subdivision, which we have to, to sign the subdivision plans.
We've got the subdivision plans, and we've got a covenant. We haven't seen the covenant, just getting this. Today, we've got town councils, okay, that, it looks, looks good. So if you want to approve it today, that'd be great. Otherwise, we'd have to wait until...
Do I have to sign that, or just roll?
Yes.
You don't have to sign it?
Yep.
So we only have two people here to sign, so...
They have to come in, if you want to approve it, but you can approve it. Approve it.
You vote on approval?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the covenant?
May I have a second to approve the covenant?
Todd, I'll second.
All those in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Duarkesh Nalan?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, an aye, it is a vote. Steve and I will sign it, and you are the three who will have to come in at your convenience during town all hours to sign. But it is approved.
Yep.
Okay, CMR PC delegates?
So through the chair, this is a annual exercise. The town has two delegates to CMR PC, Center for National Planning Commission, and two associates, the planning board. There's authorized to appoint two delegates currently. It's, Steve and Todd, there are two delegates, the two associates, Shannon Regan and Rachel Pressley. So if you want to vote to reappoint those two, or if Males wants to do it, that'd be great.
Would you like to be reappointed, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, and Todd, would you like to be reappointed?
Yes, I would.
Hey, so wait, you have a vote now?
Yeah, vote to approve.
Can I have a motion to vote to approve the two gentlemen?
Can I make that motion?
Nope.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ron. Can I have a second? That's going to be by you, Duarkesh.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Duarkesh Nalan?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, an aye, it is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen, for standing up to do that.
That's very helpful.
Fall town meeting, proposed zoning changes, table of uses and description, that's in our packet.
So through the chair, this is, town meeting's coming up, it's that time of year again. There are three proposed zoning changes. You have two open in front of you. The third one, which I didn't include, is the animal bylaw, which will be altering and adding, looking to alter and add. I can share that for, for next time, but I wanted to give it to everybody, if they have comments. If the player wants to sponsor these articles, that'd be great. The warrant is currently open, so...
You can vote on this later?
Yeah, you can vote on that to sponsor it. There's no, we still have to hold a public hearing. I'll schedule that out, and there'll be that whole process. So sponsoring it just means that we can send it to the selectmen, we put on the warrant.
The public hearing, wouldn't that be with the zoning board?
No, that'll be with us.
Okay. So it won't really do us any good to vote to approve this tonight?
No, it's not approving, just sponsoring.
All right, sponsoring.
What was the reason these changes needed to come about?
It's something we were looking at to do in last spring. About the pandemic hits, we put it on hold. It's partly economic development. Where you said there's a bunch of new uses listed. Some of it is data language, computer service bureau, I don't know what that is, but the language is in there. Secretarial services, just some of the languages dated and doesn't really apply to the 21st century. Some of it is changing, allow uses to kind of conform to what's already in the districts. So it's just kind of, a lot of these changes haven't happened in 40 years. It's just kind of modernizing the uses.
Mostly clarifications, and, I mean, from reading it, they are, they're subsections, so just makes it easier to administer.
Yep. There are a bunch of us from Inspection Services met today to discuss this. We kind of went through some, there's been some more tweaks to the table since you received it, so you'll have cleaner copy next time. Mainly, it's dealing with apartments and some other miscellaneous wording.
But sponsoring it, we're not...
Not taking a stand on anything, it's just basically getting the process going.
I don't, I don't want to sponsor it at this time until we get the re-updates. We can do that the next meeting.
Yeah.
Correct. So I'm going to ask for a motion to sponsor.
Okay.
September 12th. Height regulations, is that anything?
Yes. That was a spreadsheet. Currently, the tallest building allowed under the zoning regs is 35 feet. That is very limiting for economic development, for growth. I can't tell you the number of times I had people coming to me looking to build a six-story building or a five-story building, and we can't do it. We're looking to increase the height in most of the districts, at least a little bit, and a lot in the, in the industrial and highway business districts of 210 feet. Charlton currently recently approved a zoning of 210 feet to let Amazon come in. So it's been the economic development-driven, tried to stay competitive. Worcester has taller, allows taller buildings, Charlton does, and Westboro, they all estimate demographics.
What's the proposal, 210?
110.
110.
This is support about a fire chief. He, he likes the idea. He kind of compared the mall to the Eiffel Tower. The mall is as tall, and if you stood the mall up, it's as tall as the Eiffel Tower, and it has just as many issues dealing with, if there was a fire there, than the tall building. The tall building actually has, anything over 70 feet has much, is more stringent. The tall building actually has, anything over 70 feet has much, has more stringent fire code, so it's much better protected, the taller it is, so...
What's the special permit process?
That would be through ZBA. They would just, it's kind of a second check on, they have to, they have a little more leniency to require different things than just a site plan does. So again, this is just kind of...
And currently, anything over 35 feet requires special permit?
Anything over 35 is not allowed period.
Not allowed.
Without a variance, yeah. So apartment buildings, those are usually taller than three stories. Pharmaceutical biotech labs are usually taller, six, eight feet, they want, they want the height. There's not much land vacant or undeveloped in Auburn. The only way to increase density is vertical. So it's, it's economically a good idea to build density that way.
Business development is requesting these?
Yeah. There's been a lot of, I've gotten lots of questions, our economic development coordinator fielded a lot of questions about putting in tall buildings with a lot of variance, which is hard to get, you know?
That I restriction, restricted Macy's from putting a second floor where Reliant is now, or a third floor, but wasn't allowed.
I've had discussions with the fire chief as well, and he used the same analogy. It's a lot easier to fight a fire that's burning up and spreading.
Okay, moving right along, we have the decisions for 92 and 104 Tinkale Road. Those have to be signed. Steve and I'll sign while we're here. You three gentlemen will have to come in at your convenience. And at the same time, you can sign the Commerce Park subdivision plan and the Commerce Park subdivision covenant.
Preferably as soon as possible, they're looking for, to get going on some of the construction, so...
All right, then moving to the meeting minutes. I'd like to have somebody make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll make that motion to approve as amended.
May I have a second?
Sir Todd, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. May I have any, no unforeseen business by me, the chair? Is there any town plan or update?
Not at this time, though.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Steve?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Duarkesh? And myself, John Regis, an aye, it is a vote. We'll see you, gentlemen, on the 14th of September.